I will call to order the Tuesday, March twentieth, twenty eighteen, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. If you'll please join with me in a moment of silent prayer and reflection, we ask that you particularly keep in mind our first responders throughout the county, our law enforcement, our fire protection services, our EMS, and our rescue squad, and emergency communication folks that are on duty twenty-four seven in the service of our county, and who are also in many instances at personal risk. You please join us on pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Jones, could you please summarize any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we actually have one addition to the agenda. It's a closed session, which is attorney-client, which is compliant with North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight dash eleven A three.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. We do have one appointment before the board. We have a request from Iredell County Economic Development on behalf of Roushen Yates Racing Engines LLC to extend the time period for an incentive agreement. And Mr. Russ Rogerson, or Chris Younger, will tee that up.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're here tonight to request an extension of the hundred-and-eight-day period to complete the contract for incentives with Roushe Yates. This is no cause of the company, and we should have this thing wrapped up within the week, but we are beyond the hundred-and-eight days, and we respectfully request an extension.
Is there any comment or questions you have to the board? Okay. Is there a motion?
Make motion, we approve the extension, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Howell. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogerson. Think you can stay up there?
I think so.
Move on to item seven, public hearings. We have item seven point one, a public hearing for the consideration of an economic development incentive for project control.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for the opportunity to present to you tonight, Project Control's incentive proposal for your consideration. My colleague, Chris Younger, and I are here on behalf of the Iredell County Economic Development Corporation, and before we get into the details of the proposed project, I would like to give you a little background on this excellent opportunity for our community. Project Control has not and will not make any official decision on their location until they receive approval of incentives from Iredell County, Town of Mooresville, and the state of North Carolina. We did receive approval last night at the Town of Mooresville. We hope to receive your approval tonight, and we expect the state's approval in consideration later, late at the end of March. The company name will not be revealed or make any location decision until all the proposed incentives are approved, so we do expect a decision shortly thereafter. Project Control is the headquarters and operations center. It's considering a location within the Town of Mooresville, and the company anticipates hiring three-hundred-and-sixty-seven people with an average salary of one-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. They also plan to invest twenty-eight-point-nine million in building and equipment. The company's interest in our community is proof that we are truly a location that is attractive to high-wage, high-technology jobs within the Charlotte market. We would not be here tonight, however, without the strong teamwork that our community has demonstrated time and time again. This project required the county, the Town of Mooresville, the private sector, and the state of North Carolina, both with the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina and the NC Department of Commerce, and even the North Carolina Legislature, to work together and pool their resources to potentially attract the company in a very competitive environment. I'm happy to report to you that our team worked well and provided a strong incentive package while also highlighting the inherent strengths that we have in North Carolina and in particular, Iredell County. This company will be hiring highly educated and technology employees from around the United States and moving them to Mooresville and Iredell County and the surrounding area. We believe that our quality of life, strong education system, as well as a variety of housing, are very strong components in our favor. In addition, our proximity to Charlotte and the Charlotte Douglas International Airport are also key factors. Our low cost of operations and our fiber connectivity network are two more examples of how we are able to compete for headquarters and other high-tech jobs. The company is considering locating in the Langtree area near Lowe's headquarters. We believe the Langtree area, just off of exit thirty-one, is an ideal location for headquarters operations like Project Control. While we have many competitive advantages existing in our community, we still need to provide incentives to the company in order to help offset their upfront costs of operations. We are also facing very strong incentive competition with another state. So what I'm going to ask next is for Chris Younger to come up and give you the details on the incentive request before you this evening. Chris?
Thank you, Russ. Good evening. Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation is proud to announce Project Control's potential plans to construct their new headquarters and operations center facility in Mooresville, North Carolina. At this time, the company does request to remain known as Project Control until a final decision has been made. They are a technology-based operations center with expected plans to build a hundred thousand square feet, a new facility on ten acres. That ten acres will be located in the Langtree area of Mooresville. The project anticipates to create three-hundred-and-sixty-seven full-time positions with an average wage of one-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars per year, and generate twenty-eight million nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand two-hundred dollars in new investment. This project would be spread over a five-year period and expected to be completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-two. In accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Development Center program, we are requesting a ten-year tax grant back incentive be granted to Project Control with an estimated value of up to nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars, which averages to approximately ninety-five-thousand eight-hundred dollars per year. I want to thank you for consideration this matter. We would be happy to answer any questions you may have for us at this time.
Are there any comments or questions from the board of Mr. Rogerson or Mr. Younger?
We appreciate your work on this. I know the, some concerns that came out of Mooresville last night was just the fact that, you know, some people don't understand sometimes the anonymous nature of these situations. We can assure them they would definitely be proud of this company if it comes here and the work you guys have put into this progress, process. I definitely think it would be an asset to Mooresville and Iredell County, so I want to thank you for the work you've put into it.
Very welcome, and the company also thanks you.
Thank them.
I think we've, I think we've all been very impressed with this, this particular project. You've worked hard on it, and this is a big fish, we need this. Thank you.
And it has been a team effort, and North Carolina is a big winner. This was, there was competition outside of this state, and at the end of the day, the fundamentals that Iredell County brings to the table provided the foundation for a very successful discussion and negotiation.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for your part in conducting all of the coordination. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, and do we have anyone signed up this day?
No, sir.
No? Then I would inquire of anyone in the audience tonight, if they would like to be heard on this matter. Seeing or hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to approve an economic incentive up to nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars over a ten-year period, based on this company's investment of twenty-eight million nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars and its contingent upon the contract being executed within a hundred-and-eighty days.
And that was twenty-eight million nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand two-hundred dollars.
Two-hundred, yes, excuse me.
A motion by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission, for all your support of economic development and what you do for Iredell County. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And we do want to also mention that we have good partners at the state, in the Department of Commerce, and especially Representative Fraley, and his efforts to engage at that level.
Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely was teamwork.
Thank you.
Now proceed to item seven point two on the agenda, which is a public hearing for the proposed changes to the Iredell County Personnel Ordinance regarding Article Five, Section Four, adverse weather conditions and administrative leave. At this time, I will pass that over to our Acton County Manager, Beth Jones, who will summarize that change.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. This was something that came about back in January when we had our two snow days for our inclement weather, and there was a discussion about the fact when administrative leave is called, there are still county employees and county departments that must respond and that must work. A lot of those are our emergency services, also our Facility Services Department that have to go and clear parking lots and clear sidewalks for our emergency personnel to be able to, to continue to perform those duties and responsibilities. So as a result of some conversations that started with those, and I'm going to point out to the sheriff and dish it over to him in a few minutes, because he was one of the main contributors to this, to this idea, and something that the board is going to be considering tonight, but as part of that discussion, there seems to, to be an inequity between our departments. Those that are required to work do not receive comparable time off. Those that are not required to work, they, they have that time off, but those that, that have to work during administrative leaves or adverse weather days do not. So what we created is a policy for the board to consider, and the reason we have to have a public hearing is because it would be a revision to our Iredell County Personnel Ordinance, because it is an ordinance, it does require a public hearing. So what I'd like to present is an amendment to our adverse weather conditions policy, which would basically allow floating administrative leave can be accrued by all non-exempt full-time personnel that are required to work, all on-call employees required to work, and employees that are required to report to work to perform critical duties. Basically, they will accrue that time that can be used at a later date upon department head approval, and it will be an hour-for-hour accumulation for the regular work schedule, either eight or twelve hours, some work twelve-hour shifts, some work eight-hour shifts, but it will be an hour-for-hour accumulation. It would be held for twelve months. They can use that time with the approval of the department head within that twelve months. If they do not use that time, it will roll off, so it will be eliminated after twelve months, and it is not paid out if the employee chooses to leave. So this is a proposal that we would like to put before the board to consider and have the public hearing on it tonight, and I'd like to ask Sheriff Campbell if he has anything that he would like to add as, as well.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to come here. I had a bunch of notes, I have, but Beth or the county manager pretty much clarified that. You know, we're obviously here with emergency service blessed by a board that supports us in everything we do. Tonight, I'm here not only just as a sheriff and not just for law enforcement, but on behalf of EMS and ECOM, even though I didn't tell them, but the nuts and the bolts is when they're out here, no matter how dangerous or how adverse the weather conditions are, they must work. Even if they're here, they don't get to go home, they, they don't enjoy a chance to go home sled with their children or anything like that. Where this come about is, like I said, about a month and a half ago, we had a larger snow event. Coincidentally, I was at the office, and Commissioner Howell was in, four-wheel driving, was coming down the Constitution Lane and trying to figure out everybody was leaving at that time. So we discussed, and he came in and asked me basically, how do we maintain our service? And with a snow day, and I explained how our essential personnel is who we require to stay, and the rest goes home. And, and I cannot say of a better way to extend out to ECOM, Fire, EMS, Facility Services, anybody else that this would help, is for recruitment, for retaining, to build morale, is to basically say, we understand when you're here, you don't, do not have the option to go home. You know, it's basically, it's nothing extra, it's nothing above and beyond, it's just basically if one division or one department's allowed to accrue and get administrative hours, I think just like the county manager said, it should be extended to law enforcement and EMS and ECOM and anybody else that must work. So with that being said, any questions that you may have with me, I can tell you from our department, this is not going to affect salary position, it's not command staff, I expect them to be there and do that duty anyway. This is the guys in the trench, this is the telecommunications, the EMS workers, that must work out there. So, thank you very much.
Sheriff, just tell the public for sure, this is no additional cost.
No additional cost, this will be, no, it's nothing more than just our time is the way it'll be, and our salary personnel, salary, salary people, this will not affect anyone.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you to the sheriff, he, you know, making us aware of this inequity, and, and, you know, we've put forth a lot of effort in the last year to, through various other policy changes and programs to, to try to retain and recruit top-tier candidates and employees, and, and let them know we appreciate them, and this just, in my opinion, just lets them know, hey, you have to be here, but we're going to give you equitable time off later to spend with your family when you weren't able to be home during a snow day and things like that. So I want to say thank you to staff that had to look up the time, maintain the time, the work that went into the policy change, and thank the sheriff for bringing it to our attention and advocating on behalf of his people and the other people that have to work. A lot of work went into it.
Further comments? I do want to thank Commissioner Howell and the general government task force for surfacing this as an issue and addressing it similar to the issue that we addressed a couple of meetings ago concerning amendment to the Personnel Ordinance to address a use-it-or-lose-it conundrum with unused leaves. So, thank you all, as said, just trying to ensure that our, all of our employers are treated equitably and that we're the employer of choice.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
And thank you, Sheriff, for taking your time. Sheriff Campbell, out of your busy schedule, to share your perspectives.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and I don't believe anyone signed up this matter. Likewise, I would inquire of anyone in attendance if they would like to be heard. Seeing or hearing none, I'll close the public meeting and ask if there is a motion.
Chairman, I get motion.
Motion by Commissioner Norman to ratify the proposed changes to the Iredell County Personnel Ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll move on to administrative matters that were appropriate for a consent agenda, which we reviewed at our pre-agenda meeting at five o'clock. I would note that the pre-agenda meeting is an open meeting, and anyone, the members of the public, are invited to attend. Most of these are technical issues, and those issues that appear to have any discussion that would be appropriate at this hour, we usually roll over to the seven o'clock hour. So, Ms. Jones, if you'd please summarize those items that were appropriate for the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I actually do have one item of clarification with the item we just disposed of. We had talked about it before, and it was the agreement of the board to make this, this retroactive to, to the past snow event back in January, but I just want to make sure we cite that for the record, so we have a record of that, to make this retroactive back to the January.
January of eighteen, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, starting with this calendar year of January of eighteen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The following items were disposed of at the five o'clock pre-agenda meeting and agreed to be put on the consent agenda. The first item was a request from ECOM to approve a budget amendment number thirty-two in the amount of fifteen thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars to receive and disperse E-nine-one-one funds to Mooresville Police Department. There was a request from ECOM to proclaim April, I'm sorry, that one actually is held for the regular meeting. There was a request from the Public Library to apply for E-rate discounts, a request from Mountmoren Volunteer Fire Department to approve budget amendment number thirty-three to withdraw ninety thousand dollars from the Mountmoren Fire Department Tax District Reserve account to make the first progress payment on a new fire engine, a request from Parks and Recreation Department and Recreation Advisory Committee for approval of the Jennings Park site-specific master plan as submitted, a request from Planning and Development to release seventy-five percent of the value of a one-hundred-thousand-dollar letter of credit on a recently completed stormwater control pond project at AAA storage in Mooresville, a request from the Solid Waste Department for approval of a contract to provide scrap tire management services with New River Tire Recycling LLC, a request from ECOM for approval for an award of sole-source purchase agreement with wireless telecom, or wireless communication, excuse me, to provide and install two new Patriot Sentinel positions and one mobile command unit at the Mooresville Police Department, which is our backup site, a request from Administration to approve, for approval of a three-year no-cost renewal agreement with the Department of Public Safety to provide space for the probation and parole offices in county-owned buildings, a request from the Finance Department for approval of Martin Starnes and Associates CPA, PA audit contract for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, a request from the Finance Department to authorize the Acton County Manager to approve payments from contingency in the Jail Capital Project Fund and the Public Safety Capital Project Fund with a report to the Board of Commissioners, a request from Tax Administration for approval of February refunds and releases, and finally, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on March the sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Is there any further discussion on these items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Chairman, do we need to clarify, did she mention, I may have missed it, the item number nine that's going to be tabled until April seventeenth?
It wasn't mentioned in the consent, I was going to mention that.
I apologize, okay.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. There are two items on the administrative matters that we carried forward to the seven o'clock hour. hour. First is a request from the Emergency Communications Department to proclaim April 2018 as National 911 Education Month, and the week of April 8th through 14th is Telecommunicator Week. And we're very pleased to have with us today, from our emergency communications staff, Star Wolf and Terra Default.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you very much for allowing us to have the time this evening. Also, I'd like to extend our gratitude reference to the adverse weather that y'all just passed. That is, we greatly appreciate it, that's something that we will, I don't know that anybody at ECOM actually knows about it, so we're excited to get to go tell them. In 2008, the United States Congress designated April as 911 Education Month with the second week of the month as Telecommunicator Appreciation Week designated in 1991. Since implementation of these ideals in Aridale County, we have formed a Public Relations Committee and have tried to incorporate the community and schools during this time and throughout the year. It gives us a platform to start the education process on how things have developed and the ways that people can help us and themselves to ensure a better response for personnel along with what to expect when they call 911. This year, our center has seen a lot of changes, and as we look in the direction to move forward with the ever-changing technology in 911, we are striving to reach all faculties of this county to better place a face with the voice behind the phone and radio. Telecommunicator Week gives us a chance to celebrate all of our changes and the difference that each of us strive to make in each caller's lives, and as I and Star stand here, we request that you designate April as 911 Education Month, and the second week of April, the 8th through the 14th, as Telecommunicator Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate both of you attending this evening. Check with the county managers about comp time on that. The board has had an opportunity to read the proclamation that has been proposed. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Norman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Therefore, I'll read into the record this proclamation concerning 911 Education Month of April 2018 and April 8th through 14th, 2018, as National Telecommunicator Week. Whereas 911 is nationally recognized as the number to call in an emergency to receive immediate help from police, fire, emergency medical services, or other appropriate emergency response entities, and whereas 911 was designated by Congress as the national emergency call number under the Wireless Communications and Public Safety Act of 1999, Public Law 106-81, and whereas the Enhanced 911 Act of 2004, Public Law 108-494, established Enhanced 911 as a high national priority as part of our nation's homeland security and public safety, and whereas people of all ages use 911, and it is critical to educate the public of all ages on the proper use of 911, and whereas a growing segment of the population, including the deaf, hard-of-hearing, deaf-blind, and individuals with speech disabilities, increasingly communicate with non-traditional text, video, and instant messaging communication services, and anticipate that these services will be able to connect directly to 911, and whereas thousands of 911 calls are made every year by children properly used in the use of 911, resulting in lives saved, which underscores the critical importance of training children early in life about 911, and whereas there is wide misuse of the 911 system, including prank and non-emergency calls, which can result in costly and inefficient use of 911 and emergency response services. Now, therefore, the Aridale County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2018 as National 911 Education Month, and April 8th through 14th, 2018, as National Telecommunicator Week. I call upon all government officials, parents, teachers, school administrators, caregivers, business leaders, nonprofit organizations, and the people of the United States to observe this month with training, events, and activities to educate the public on 911. Furthermore, to honor during this week those public safety communicators who have dedicated their lives to providing this vital emergency service, dated this 20th day of March 2018, signed by myself and attested by the clerk of the commission. Thank you very much for all you all do. The next item that was on the administrative agenda was item 8.9. We discussed, this was a request from Facility Services for approval of a sole-source award for the purchase and installation of locks for the Social Services Building. After discussing the costs, we have asked that Mr. Dean Lael get with the Sheriff's Department and the schools to determine whether or not the locking mechanisms that they have recently purchased for Central Elementary would be a more effective and a less costly alternative. So, they're going to go ahead and check into that, and we've tabled, there's been a suggestion to table that matter for four weeks. Is there a motion to table the matter for four weeks?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion table to April 17th meeting.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Howpe, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. There is, no, there are no announcements of any vacancies other than one that just came up, it didn't make the agenda, but one individual has just put in their resignation from the Planning Board. That segues into our next item, which is appointments to boards and commissions. The first item is six appointments that are proposed to the Aridale County Board of Equalization and Review, and I would ask if there's a motion in that matter.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make six appointments recommendations, and I have to recognize these specific positions. Mike Loftus, Chairman, Carl Lombardo, Vice Chairman, Mike Brotherton, Member, Dan Howard, Member, Hal Jolly, Member, Al Simmons, Alternate.
Motion by Commissioner Howpe, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Second item is one appointment scheduled for the Aridale County Planning Board. We have two applicants for that one position, but after having continued this matter for another two weeks to get additional applicants in, this matter's been open and advertised for one position for a total of four weeks. We just recently received the resignation of a second member. So in the interest of making sure that the Planning Board has sufficient members to do the important work that they do, that there are two vacancies and that there are two applicants, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules to not advertise the recently vacated position and to proceed to vote to fill both positions this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion to suspend the rules and go ahead and fill both of those positions this evening with the two names submitted.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. I'll then ask if there is a motion concerning the two individuals to be appointed to the vacancies.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint, appointment number one goes to, the original appointment would go to Tracy Jenkins, and appointment two goes to Robert Carl Palms, Jr.
Motion by Commissioner Howpe, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. We thank all the folks that have volunteered to serve on these two very important commissions and boards. Planning Board is absolutely critical to managing the growth and achieving the balancing of all the equities that come with rezoning properties, and that some of our most difficult decisions have to do with those issues. The Board of Equalization and Review likewise performs a very important function to everyone who is going to get a tax revaluation for their homes in the upcoming tax revaluation year, but this is the board that will hear any appeals as to those valuations, which obviously impact the taxes that you pay. So the individuals that have volunteered here will be very busy, I'm sure, for the better part of a year, and then go back into hibernation. Okay, so, is there any unfinished business to come before the board? They're hearing none, we'll move on. This is a public comment period, sort of the open-mic Tuesday, and we have two individuals who have signed up to be heard, there are three-minute limit, there is no restriction as to topic, and so, Mr. Richard Christenberry, if you'll please announce your name and address so that the mic can pick you up there.
Yes, my name is Richard Christenberry, excuse me, at 191 Springs Shore Road, Statesville. It's about 14 miles from here, but five miles outside of Statesville in the country, in the Springs Shore sub-development. And this is one of, I wanted to bring this to your attention, if you've never had this happen, but do any of you, excuse me, any outdoor cats or dogs, if you have any animals outside that, I'm trying to get it right, right here too, that the county has the right, if your cat is not on your property, excuse me, they can pick it up, take it to the county, you know, county shelter, then have you go pick it up there then too. And for 40 years we've lived here, nobody's had any complaints. I mean, we've had everybody's cats, dogs in the neighborhood just wander around, and one of our neighbors has gotten, since his cat's died, he wanted, I guess, everybody to keep their cats off his property. He's got 38 acres behind us with a barn that's 20,000 square feet, so he says cats are going on his porch and spraying. So, long story short, they tried to pick up all of our cats and ended up, I got a $75 fine because one cat got off my property then too, when the county commission made that care of county, Animal Control, there you go. This is my daughter right here too, and we were trying to look at the laws and stuff, and it mentions, you know, support service dogs for people, you know, dogs and ponies, but it doesn't designate cats, but emotional cats, emotional service animals can be used. And my brother-in-law recently got hit by a car when he was walking, and this has been a blessing to him to get to get up, go outside, feed the cats, and just sit there with them, because he'll be living with us forever, he'll never leave the home now. And so now, we have to have all our cats, we have six, I say all, the mother and five kittens in a cage, waiting for somebody to make a decision that cats can run free. I've never seen anybody say, your cat can't leave your yard. I, three seconds left, that's just it. I wanted to know if you guys knew that then too, even in town, if your cat gets off your lawn, or your dog, it's the same thing. First time is a warning, second time is a $75 fine, third time is a $125 fine, so that's why we just picked them up, put them in our cage and just, that's my daughter's responsibility now, because my brother-in-law couldn't do anything with his hands like that then. So, I guess that's my three minutes there. Now, do you have any questions? Because I do, I think it's the most absurd thing I've ever, ever heard, that you can keep a cat, a free roaming animal, on your property. How do you, how do you do that? And the answer was, you got to have direct control of your animal. I could see a dog, you walk in a dog on a leash, yeah, yeah, but you got to have a leash for a cat? If you take it outside then, and then they say, well, build it an enclosure, I mean, what is good for the cat? If you can't get out and roam, the average cat radius is two miles at night like that when they go out. And so I looked through everything, all the laws from the federal, state, down to the local, and the only thing I could see to squeeze in, do you have service dogs, service ponies, and we're just requesting emotional dogs or cats, or an emotional animal can be anything, and that's the only way I could think you put, anybody can put cats out, and there's 35 million cat owners in the United States. I know Aridale County's got a lot of them too, so if we had to put this in the paper, your cat cannot get out of your yard, everyone would think we're just out of our minds, or maybe it's just me. We had dogs, and we, I built a fence and kept them in because they were large dogs, an English Mastiff, 175 pounds, I could see that dog being required to stay, and a little, I call it a Heinz 57, just a little dog kept him in too. But a cat, I just don't know how you're supposed to keep a cat within your, we have a half acre like that then too, the neighbors on the right, left, both feed them, the one across the street feeds them like that then too, their cats come over here and eat, sleep, but I have one neighbor that's just, I think, early in the old timers or something like that, it's just, it was fine when his cat came down and slept with ours on top of the car, but since his cat passed away, he don't want anything on his property. If you step one foot, he'll be calling the police. So my three minutes for plus are off then. So, let me know how you think this is supposed to work out.
Interestingly enough, our Animal Control Services Director was checking people in. It's hosting, I don't know if Brad is still here or not.
I think he is, no.
But he could probably answer some of your questions directly. Have you spoken?
I just, I just was going to say, just from personal experiences, I mean, I don't know whether invisible fencing would work, but just from a common sense and an animal lover's perspective is, you know, a lot of people, your neighbors and people, you know, your animal encroaching on other people's properties, you could imagine if you had a nice car and a cat walked on the car and scratched it. Some of the people aren't like you and don't make sure their animals are given their annual shots and things like that, and they could scratch other animals or kids or something like that. So, I think it's just from a common sense perspective, is the policies that our people do enforce are put there for the majority and to try to keep some type of semblance of fair play and to keep people from burdening you on your property. You wouldn't want a dog or cat coming on your property that may not play nice with your animals either, or that may would spray your porch, or you're in a walk on your nice car or something like that. You know, I'm an animal lover myself, but I think, you know, our people are just doing their job, and I think, you know, they're, everything we do from our general government side is, is really, it's a complaint is really, it's a complaint driven. Our people aren't gonna come out there, uh, without a complaint, they're responding to complaints. So, you know, they're doing their job and I apologize, you had to get a fine to do that, but I think, you know, coming up with solutions, you know, invisible fencing, I've heard of people doing that for cats and dogs, to try to keep them within a certain area. But, um, you know, the policies are there for the betterment of all the citizens and sometimes a small amount of us are burdened more than others, but, um, I sure wouldn't want you to be upset with our employees for doing their job because they're, they're just trying to protect, uh, the citizens as a whole, you know.
Matter of fact, they were especially kind.
Right.
They worked every way they possibly could with us. And they said, all I know is just go talk to the county commissioner, tell them your problem and speak to see what happens, what comes out of that then.
Maybe check with, uh, some of the invisible fencing companies and I know they can probably control the level of, uh, of, you know, electricity in the shop for the animal depending on the animal size, I'm sure. That may be a solution.
Sir, I'm not sure about the, the spraying part, but, uh, are any of your cats neutered?
Uh, yeah, they're neutered and rabies too. So, we're in the law limits of it then, we're not worried about the rabies, but invisible fence will keep my cats in. But then, all of the neighborhood cats over there just have their gathering.
As, as this board sits here and makes policies and then the county employees go out and enforce those policies, it's in an effort to try to be fair to everybody. Sometimes it's very hard to do to set one policy that's fair to everybody. But basically where your rights stop, another person's rights begin. So, uh, we had to try to set some kind of a policy and, uh, keeping it at home is the best thing, although you may want to try to extend the hand of, of fellowship out and see if you can't get some grace from your neighbor, cause we all know that.
I'm sorry.
Hey, we, we all know that we can't always keep our animals on our property, but we have to understand that when they leave our property, that, you know, there are rules in place and we're at somebody else's mercy, so to speak.
Oh, I agree. We ask for grace. Even my cardiologist asked for grace when I was getting a heart transplant. And he said, I don't care if he dies or not.
Did you say your neighbor's cat passed away?
Oh, yeah.
To remind him, go over and offer to take him and adopt a nice other pet that would be a good emotional support for that person, hopefully.
Oh, I.
Might be a solution.
Yes, I do.
You replace his animal with another animal, he may be more caring and flexible and.
He has a dog.
Oh, okay. It was a good idea though.
Yeah, we try anything and everything.
We, we, we will examine the ordinance we have and see if it needs any tweaking, but we've spent a lot of time on that ordinance already and be honest with you, that's the only ordinance we can come up with at this time that, that somewhat treats folks fair.
Yeah, and our community for forty years, fifty-three homes, so we know everybody. And if it comes up and say, Frank Harbison over here again, oh, okay, I'll come get him or send him home. You know who they are, he knows who they are too. And they come way out, especially if somebody has been not fixed yet, then really you get everything, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you for your input, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Christenberry. Okay, uh, next up, Tria Daniels.
Yes, sir. Mr. Christenberry's daughter, and just add to that and try to not, uh, recover things. Um, my issue is that I don't believe that it was our cats that was spraying on their property because they're either, our males are either fixed or, uh, they're still too young to have started that behavior. And there are a ton of cats in our neighborhood. There's also two adjacent neighborhoods that have a ton of cats, we're right there on the lake and we've had, excuse me, two neighbors add, I mean, I'm sorry, two neighborhoods added. And so we do get a lot more cats through than we used to get and some of them are feral. And we've been doing, we, we weren't gonna take any animals in at all, we've had them all our life, but my dad with his heart transplant isn't even supposed to be around cats. So there's no way that we can bring them inside our house to protect them that way. And I think that's the same for a lot of people with disabilities and people that are in apartments or something like that, if they work during the day, if they gotta be at the hospital all day long, maybe even gone three days, a cat is a whole lot more logical for them to have than a dog. Because a cat, they can leave that way, but they can't leave a dog that way. And the other thing is, I have an issue with our neighbors being able to blame us for everything they're alleging has happened on their property, that it's somehow our cats. And then the animal control can come and say, is your cats over there and they're bothering them? When we have cats come through our property all the time, that I have to run off all the time. And I understand they're annoying and I understand they spray, we have the same problem that our neighbors have. And again, we've always tolerated their animals and dealt with everything. And how is it fair that they can say, oh, you know, our neighbor's cats are spraying, when there's who knows how many cats in these three neighborhoods? And yet they can make it our cats' fault and now our cats are caged. And I do have to take care of them, really I'm not physically able to do it. And then my uncle with his TBI, that's the one thing that, I mean, he was injured in the part that controls, uh, his, you know, he's paranoid, he gets angry really easy, his emotions get out of control. Only thing that calms him is those cats. And I don't see how, and I mean, I've talked to people all over the country. All the laws in all the states, the state laws that we could find going back to the eighteen hundreds, actually no, seventeen hundreds in North Carolina, dogs are to be fenced, cats are to be left be. And I just don't see how it makes any sense that, you know, it, and also in the, there's a point of law too, that in the Iredell County Animal Control, it says that they can adopt any laws that there are anywhere else, you know, going up to the state. There's no laws that say that cats have to be fenced in. I mean, we've spent hours on this. And so first of all, I don't think that there's any support in state law and really throughout the United States. And also there's the issue that they can blame us and say that it's all of our cats' faults, when we're the ones that's getting these cats fixed, as we're financially able, which we're really not able to. And, you know, suddenly we have to have our cats all in a cage with no ability to let them out when, like my dad said, forty-five years, this has been the situation. And we've got a widow that lives across the street from us, we've always fed her cats, she's always fed ours. That's, her cats are all she has. And we've got these people trapping and killing these cats. We can't prove it, but when you hear a shot in the middle of the night, the next day, one of your cats is gone and you never see them again. And the next time a cat goes missing, you've heard the shot the night before. I mean, this is what these people are doing and they're saying that our cats are spraying their thing when they're murdering our cats. And I mean, we, we have, we have no.
Okay.
Ability, retribution or to protect ourselves.
We're at, we're at the, the time expiration. Uh, we, we get a very good sense of what your issues are and, and your concerns. Um, you know, the animal control ordinance.
We're breaking.
Yeah, the animal control ordinance, uh, I think we spent more time and effort back and forth over that because, uh, people have very different cultural and economic models. There's folks that live in subdivisions, there's folks that live in the country. And the rule sets that are appropriate for those two different environments, uh, come in conflict, you know, when, when you have them abutting one another. And it's hard to come up with a, a one-size-fits-all approach. And our, uh, animal control staff leans over backwards to try to, uh, resolve issues and to educate folks about, you know, the best way to, you know, be in compliance with the law. I would say that if you have an issue about a, a fact issue, which is, it's not our cats, you know, there is an appeals process built into our animal control ordinance and you can, uh, take that to another level. You can pay the fine or you can appeal. Um, if it's illegal, and, and eventually you can appeal, you know, into the court system. And then you can challenge the, you know, whether there's law out there that's, uh.
Yeah, but that, that getting to the upper courts in the appeals, that goes with the fines. And I mean, the fines keep doubling and then once they've doubled so many times, that's when it goes into the courts and we're talking hundreds and hundreds of dollars here.
And that's, that's where you just have to do a cost-benefit analysis about whether it's worth the cost to you to prevail on whatever the points are that you disagree on.
Well, you have people living on disability.
But we, we are not, we are not a body that makes those decisions. We're, we set policy in compliance with North Carolina law because we are a subset of.
But this isn't in North Carolina law, that cats have to be fenced. It is dogs, it's not cats. And there's the other issue.
You know, it may not be fenced, but it, you know, it's just like Commissioner, Vice Chairman Bowles said, where one person's rights extend to a certain point and then you get into another person's rights and.
Well, we weren't violating the rights.
Well, and that's a fact issue that you need to take up with the animal control folks and, and appeal that and you have the right to do that. But this is not a board that makes those decisions. We, you know, we've adopted policies and we've been very, uh, careful to emphasize to our animal control staff to be as sensitive to these issues as possible and to, uh, really deal with it in as least, uh, you know, with the least amount of effort on all part, parties.
And I, the animal control people we dealt with were wonderful. They had been told that we went out and bought these cats and that, you know, we let them do whatever, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, they, once they talked to us, it was kinda like, okay, these other people are crazy, but this is, you know, this is what we have to do and, uh, by their requirements. And, uh, you know, I understood and we followed what we had to do. But it's, uh.
Well, and you know, we understand that, you know, there's no regulation that we can come up with that covers all circumstances and, uh, we, we just have to rely on people to exercise common sense and good judgment, uh, as they implement these ordinances and, uh.
And, and the long and the short of it is, you gotta find some way to keep those cats on your property. I mean, that's the only way that you can keep your cats safe is to keep your cats on your property. I mean, it's just one of those things, once it crosses off onto somebody else's property, then, then it opens a, a broad interpretation of, of whether you're doing the right thing or not. So, uh, I would, I would strongly recommend that you try to figure out some way to keep those cats at home. And I, I don't know how to tell you to do that, but keep them at home is the only way for the long term, because you're gonna fight this battle one cat at a time if you don't. You gotta figure out a way to keep, to keep them at home. I'm sorry.
Well, good luck and thank you for sharing your, uh, issues with us and, and we will talk with our staff and, and find out.
I just feel bad for all of the people with disabilities and who their only choices are cats and who are able to care for them if they have to keep them in a pen outside. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Okay, uh, anyone else that, uh, desires to be heard that didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Okay, then I'll close the, uh, public hearing, a public comment period. Is there any new business to come before the commissioners? Is, uh, and Ms. Jones, could you please, uh, share with us the county manager's report?
I just have a quick report for you, just a reminder that April the third and fourth will be the statewide hurricane exercise that we will be participating in. And just to, just to point out that this board has been incredibly proactive and willing to look at issues and concerns that have been brought to, brought to them, specifically regarding the adverse weather conditions and regarding the, um, leave time rollover and cap. You've come up with creative ideas, you've supported those and you've done that, being mindful of the impact to the taxpayer, because both of those solutions did not cost any money. So, just thank you for being so proactive and willing to look at options and solutions and, and work with staff and be open to different ideas. So that's, that speaks volumes to the board that we have and it speaks volumes to our employees and definitely takes us to the, to the point that we wanna be with being an employer of choice. So, we appreciate that. Um, just to let everyone know that we are in budget season, we are having meetings with all of our departments, we are going over budget requests, we have a lot of requests that we're, that we're going through and trying to prioritize those. So, um, we appreciate everyone being patient with us. A budget team has been working diligently. Uh, we, we've been meeting, we've, we have a notebook about yay fix, but we will have you a balanced budget and we look forward to presenting that to you in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and, uh, I think the main thing to remember is, uh, as we work through, uh, in personnel issues and, uh, all that, that we do wanna be the employer of choice from, uh, surrounding counties. We wanna have, uh, employees that, uh, uh, come to Iredell County, they join Iredell County workforce and that they remain here. And so, uh, be competitive, uh, not in terms of wages, but also, uh, other benefits and, and, and also treating folks like folks. I mean, we're all neighbors at the end of the day and we all wanna follow the golden rule and treat others as we'd like to be treated. So, thank you for, uh, the staff working with, uh, Commissioner Haupt and General Governmental Task Force to present these ideas, which I think are a tremendous amount of merit and glad that we're able to move forward on them.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we do have one item of new business that come out of closed session, just as a reminder?
Yeah, I was just getting to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make sure we didn't forget.
Yeah. Uh, we did have a closed session pursuant to, uh, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven dash A three, uh, attorney-client. And, uh, we do have a, uh, action to take as a result of that. Uh, briefly, uh, the commissioners, uh, have, over the last, uh, couple of months, received, uh, presentations from two law firms, uh, concerning, uh, the prospective, uh, representation in the, uh, national lawsuits that have been filed against, uh, opioid manufacturers and distributors that, uh, has been the, uh, cause of, uh, significant dependency and addiction problem, uh, not only, uh, in this county, but throughout the United States. There's not a county that's not touched. Uh, we've had a very proactive approach with our, um, opioid task force, uh, working with our, uh, public health, uh, and wellbeing task force with Commissioner Norman and Vice Chairman Bowles, um, and working at putting together a multidisciplinary, multifaceted, broad-based approach to dealing with the issues. Uh, you know, broadly speaking, there, which is, our strategy is aligned, I think, nest well within, uh, the recently articulated, uh, national strategy of, of dealing with this, uh, crisis of, uh, having, uh, uh, education and prevention as a significant effort. Um, having, uh, law enforcement and interdiction of, uh, opioids and the fentanyl and, uh, and frankly, you have to throw everything else in there too. Meth is a significant issue. And also, uh, the third prong is, uh, uh, treatment for those who are addicted. And that's probably the long pole on the tent. And that's the one that has probably not gotten as much, uh, emphasis over the past few decades, uh, as mental health facilities were, uh, closed down and basically people were released into communities without a lot of structured approach to helping deal with either mental health issues or addiction issues. So, uh, that national strategy and some dollars are being released. Uh, they've talked about eight billion dollars being added to the budget this year at the federal level that will be available to. federal level, that will be available to states and local communities, but that is a drop in the bucket. The number we heard, to deal with this entire issue, the cost to the United States is projected between three-hundred and five-hundred billion dollars. So this eight billion dollars is a little down payment. But those who have profited from the sale and manufacture and distribution of opioids have helped to create this situation. And as a result, litigation has been started, and national litigation, and two firms have approached us. This is not a class-action lawsuit, but it is a compilation of different specific counties and municipalities that have joined in the litigation. And two well-qualified firms presented their approaches, both substantively, from their legal theories of recovery, to the qualifications of their legal teams. And it was a difficult decision, with advice and counsel of our counsel, Lisa Valdez, we've come to a decision about participating in this opioid litigation, which is at no cost to the county. It is contingency fee-based, where the attorney fees and court costs, which are capped at thirty-five percent between the two of them, are borne by the law firm, and if they are not successful, the county pays nothing. If they are successful, then that's split in that thirty-five, sixty-five split. And so, at this time, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank both firms for their presentations, we think both of them are highly qualified, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the acting county manager entering an agreement engaging the firms of Simmons Hanley Conroy LLC, Kruger Dickinson LLC, Von Bryson &amp; Roper SC, and Ward Black Law as counsel in the relation to claims against the opioid manufacturers and opioid distributors for Idaho County.
Motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign. Motion carries unanimously. I believe that takes care of all of the items on the agenda, all hearts free.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Beth and our counsel for all the work they put in to talk with these firms and getting us ready to proceed with this.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned.